I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This special session of the Lincoln County Commission on July 14th, 2011 at 6:00 p.m. now called order. Members present Donald C. Whitmore Clark, Charles McCann President, Thomas Remy Commissioner, and Charles France Commissioner.
Okay, certainly glad to see all of you out. Basically, what we are undertaking is to comply with regulations and at the same time give members of the public a chance to learn and a chance to make any recommended ideas, have input opportunities, things of this process. And basically, the county commission is required to look at the county with the new census and try to equalize the population magistrate districts and at the same time with the bodies of the districts need to be similar in square miles and things of that nature. So it doesn't have to be exact, but it needs to be similar. And the commission did, I think all of us have looked at this thing and said, let's do this thing as best we can because with the last election, we know that we had disputes about where people lived and what magistrate district they... And we felt like here's an opportunity to look at this, give people a chance to talk about it, and come up with the very best and something that represents our county well. And the commission asked me, and put me sort of in charge, and saying, work on this thing, do what you can, and let's work this out and get it done in a timely manner. So I started making some phone calls and trying to find out what needed to be done, who could help most, and basically what I was recommended to was to, why don't you give a lady named Jo Von a call? And she might be able to help you, or she will be able to help you. And so I proceeded to do that, and I'll just take it this time to introduce you, Jo Von, our consultant that's going to work with us and work with you as we get this thing put together. But she does the work for her own company, and then she does work for the legislative redistricting. She's certainly got 10 years' old experience and I think will be a great asset to us as we work through this. So this evening, basically, what we will do is, we're not going to, I guess, sit down and start to ask question and answer, but what we want to do is maybe have Ms. Von make just a couple oversight remarks, and then take any inputs and ideas that you have. We can do it individually, we can just do it when you raise your hand, be recognized, and we will make note of those, and we'll work on those, and we'll have one other meeting similar to this, and we'll do likewise. And at some juncture between now and end of September, our goal is to have a plan put together that would meet the requirements of the district as far as magistrate districts. So we will begin that process this evening and move from there. So any comments, Ms. Von, you wish to make or anything about anything?
The only thing I would say, I really commend your commission for taking this on, and this is the best, most opportune time to do it because we've just gotten the new census figures. And with the new census figures, you know, it lets you all get on top of everything in the next 10 years. Everything will be good, and it's going to be legal. I'm a GIS specialist. I'll be able to take you down through the very point on a road where you exist. There will be a book of individual precincts that will be in your voter registration office that I will provide, so you can actually go in and see the exact boundaries of the precincts, also with the meets and bounds, the written meets and bounds, and the same with your magistrate districts. That will come in very handy. I will also be providing maps with Google Earth brought up in the background. That's kind of cool because then you'll be able to see the homes and everything of the area, and you'll get to see my little red dots that are done by my GIS software on the Google Earth, showing you where that boundary is of that precinct. So you can actually see the homes and what is exactly in those precincts and/or magisterials. With technology that we've got today, we can avoid any disruptions in your system and in your county as has taken place in the past. So, you know, like I said, I commend your commission for wanting to get things right now, and I look forward to working with your county and with the people in the county. And like I say, they would love to, the commissioners would love to hear from you guys if you've got suggestions, and you will be listened to. It does mean a lot as far as with communities of interest, you know, and that type of thing. And thanks for having me.
One point to clarify for my point of view is, I, as I read through this, started trying to research, and I was trying to find out, and Ms. Von answered, showed me that earlier in the day, that when do you have to have one of these magistrate district things done and completed and those kinds of things? And I couldn't find that information, so would you share that?
Yes. In 1, I think it's 1-2-1, it actually talks about the magistrate districts within the county, but there was no timeline. It doesn't say like we have in our code for our legislative boundaries that is done once every 10 years after the seminal census is done. Well, it didn't say that in there. So there was no, actually, there was nothing that said, I mean, it said you had to do it, and it said your magisterials were supposed to be as close in population as possible, but it didn't give you a timeline. That's going to be changed. We spent Tuesday with attorneys, take off my hat right now, I'll put my legislative hat on for a minute, with attorneys on Tuesday, we're changing the code. So in that code, it will actually say the same as that we do have an end for the legislative boundaries that the counties will be required to do it once every 10 years after the seminal census is done. That makes it easier for a lot of things, you know. When it comes to lawsuits or something like that, somebody can't say, you know, when the code said you were supposed to have it done. No, it didn't. I mean, they said your magistrate were supposed to be even in population, but there was nothing that gave you a timeline. There's going to be something that gives you a timeline now, and your counties will be on top of it because you're going to have it done before the elections in 2012.
Appreciate it, thanks. Okay, just my show of hands, any comments, how you want to do this? We've never done one of these before, so we'll write the book as a book. But I'll just start with, anybody wants to have a contribution, add on whatever, Mr. President?
Yes, Chris McCann, thanks. Commissioners out. I know you all are going to be working towards trying to equalize things as much as you can as far as the magistrate districts and all, but one thing I wanted to mention is something that's come to my attention is, I would hope that there would be continuity in districts. One that comes out to me is areas of Sheridan and Laurel Hill. When you leave West Hamlet, of course, you're in Sheridan District, and you go up Route 10 or down Route 10. And when you come to Pleasant View, you're in Laurel, you go from Sheridan into Laurel Hill, and then as soon as you leave Pleasant View, you go back into Sheridan again. And, you know, it just seems like there's a lack of continuity. I don't know how far you need to go to say, you know, this is where we're going to stop, but when you jump around like that, and there are places that you go up through there, and you all know this better than I, where on one side of the road, you'll be in one district, on the other, you're another, maybe that's necessary at times. In the Branchland area, you know, we've gotten up now, we're back into Sheridan. If we go over into Branchland Common, we're in Sheridan. However, if you go up 4 Mile and you go up parts of it, you all of a sudden, you're in Laurel Hill. And I know I've had people ask me, when I'd be up in there, you know, why do I have to go all the way to Ranger to vote? Why do I, and, you know, they're asking, somebody has no idea. But, you know, just because what they see is that they have to drive, come out of 4 Mile, drive right past Branchland School, which is a precinct for people in Sheridan, and drive all the way up to Ranger. So it's inconvenient for them, and, you know, that's just an example I have, but there should just be continuity, and people wouldn't have to drive past a voting precinct in one district in order to vote in their right hand. Thanks.
Yeah, and when you start working, you look at that map, and you can see what you're talking about. You got the output.
I have a question. Is this meeting in the public notice qualifying event to merge discontinued or whatever to Jefferson and Union? Because they still are on the part of even the 2011, if you pull up the map, they're legally entities, which was never completed. The housing counts, all the census figures, still have those two districts for everything. So is this a qualifying event? I know you have to do the public notice, you have to do public meetings, so that is my question. Is this the qualifying event to merge, consolidate, or whatever precinct?
And I'm taking only comments. I'm not going to go on record and answer any questions this time. I will, I've heard what you said.
Okay. Because I would just like to hate to, it'd be after the fact, well, we had the two meetings, we had the legal notice, and then we're out and the call again. It's not, this is not a legal meeting, it's just an informal...
This is a legal meeting for input. But we're not making any decisions this week. At some juncture, a plan will be put forth for this commission and voted upon, and there'll be a public notice for that, when we're going to do that, hopefully by the end of September, around that time. Other suggestions? Yes?
Do you all plan to go to the separate districts and do more community-type meetings versus having to have people from Harts drive to Hamlet or from Allen Creek drive to Hamlet? I mean, are y'all going to go more community-based meetings? Or just have these two right here in Hamlet?
We're having two input meetings.
Right here in Hamlet?
Yes.
But I think you might be able to get more community input if you went out to the districts themselves. Because, you know, a lot of people work, you know, 6 o'clock in the evening, they're getting home, got families, and I just think that should be considered, that we have one maybe in the Harts area, Duval area, Sheridan area. This is the Carroll district, so...
Yes?
Once we've had a chance to digest everything here, will you be accepting written comments?
Yes, absolutely. And I really like that idea of getting more written comments. Because I just want as people I can sit down and read something and get more out of it than I can just discussing and not taking notice, things like that. I really encourage any written comments, if you possibly get suggestions, ideas, things like that. Yes?
But this map that was passed out, where did it come from? And is this from Jo Von?
Yes, Jo Von took the population as given from the census data and created the map. She may want to speak to that, but that's basically, she just gave that to me really that one this evening.
Yep, it's from the 2010 census.
Okay, so the 2010 census is not showing any Jefferson districts anymore, but 2000 census did, correct?
We basically have the six magistrate districts. Jefferson is still a tax district, but Union is also, but not a magistrate, and has not been since '84. The commission back then wanted to change that at that time.
Yes, but was that filed with the state and was that filed with your office, Ms. Von?
The magisterials are not filed with my office, I'm sorry. Those are filed through the BASS, I mean, the federal government. And we do have a lot of cases with a lot of counties that the tax districts are sent to the federal government instead of the magisterials. There's exactly, right now, I had to count them this week, the legislature, we have 12 counties that turn in the tax districts instead of the magisterials. And that's not saying that the county actually did something wrong. The federal government refers to them as NCDs. It's a major county to do it. Well, what's that tell somebody with the BASS map? We've got tax districts, and so they've sent those. I mean, there's nothing saying we want your magisterials. So, you know, if your tax districts are what we're showing on the federal maps, like I say, we've got a lot of counties, and I have to ask for the counties as I did here, would you please present me with your magisterials for me to do the math?
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I may be overlooking here, but I don't see Precinct 27 in Sheridan. I see 25, 24, 25, 28, 29, 27 missing.
Is it underneath where, I may cover that up, I'm sorry. Is it under my sign?
Can you see the line?
Arrow mark, I apologize for that, if that's where it's supposed to be.
Ms. Von, is there a reason that the Harts areas, I've looked at this, it says municipality. It's not that...
Yeah, and I'll apologize for that. In fact, Mr. McCann and I discussed that. The reason it says municipality is I'm trying to come up with a word to put there because of the Census Bureau refers to things really weird. The name they call are census places. And when I do a... When I'm trying to just put on there what somebody would understand, census place may just freak them out. So we had been, in our office, we've always used the word municipality, but like Harts is not a municipality, and neither is Allen Creek, but I can't really put town there, I can't really put city, because some things are incorporated, some things are not. If y'all like, when I do the next map, I'll just go back and put census place. And it's actually what it is, is when counties turn their stuff in on their BASS, they'll turn certain areas in, populated areas, and send the boundaries of them, and that's why the Census Bureau just refers to them as a census place. It doesn't mean that they're incorporated, it doesn't mean they're unincorporated, it just means that county turned those places in, and they put them on the map. So there's, I can't really find a word unless any of you all would like to suggest one to put in there for those brown lines around places.
Are they referred to like population centers? Is that what it is?
It's not, the Census Bureau actually has no, it's just that when they send the BASS maps, which, and I'm probably confusing you all with that, I call it BASS, but it's actually called the Boundary and Annexations Survey that goes to the counties, unless you all have someone that's appointed in your county. It normally goes to the highest elected official in the county, which would be Mr. McCann, which would be the commission president. About every six months, it's going to receive a two, or, but actually, it's a square box from FedEx, and it has a map, multiple maps of your county in it. And what they're asking, if you've made any annexations, if you've changed your magisterials, any changes that you've made in your, now, they don't deal with precincts, BASS does not deal with precincts, but if you've made changes in your magisterials and/or any annexations to any of your towns or anything, they're supposed to be put on those maps and sent back to the federal government. And they are so important, and a lot of people do not understand the importance of it. This map that's showing right here, the maps that we use for West Virginia and then used all over the entire United States are called the Federal Tiger Maps. They're the exact same map that everybody uses for redistricting from the federal level all the way down to your city wards. And if somebody doesn't tell the federal government the boundaries have changed of something, then how is it going to make it on that federal map? That's why the BASS are so important, and I always hope, and we, that the counties and/or the president, like I say, I don't know if your county has someone exclusively that can receive those maps, if it's someone in your assessors' office or whoever, that they are to note any changes that are made within your county and send those back to the federal government. So when the new maps come out for the 2020 census, your county looks exactly like it's supposed to, and the boundaries around any of your quote-unquote municipalities are correct.
That's kind of what we run into with 86 when we changed things and didn't get the BASS maps in. At that time, we wound up with the problems you're talking about.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. We do have those issues. I think that's really important. As a matter of fact, I believe on August the 9th, you commissioners are going to be in Morgantown, correct? I know the state auditor actually called me and wanted me to speak to you gentlemen at that time, all the commissioners, and go through the redistricting process and discuss BASS and a lot of things. Because what a lot of people don't understand, and I want that commissioners receive, or people need to understand about your commissioners, the players are always changing within your county. You can't expect, you know, you may have commissioners that have been around for a long time, you may have totally new ones that have never been through any of these experiences. When I say the word BASS, they're thinking, what the heck is that? Or even redistricting, a lot of them are not confronted with these issues until they hit them in the face, or a lawsuit, or whatever happens. So that's why it's important, they wanted me to speak. I don't know if we're going to be in the middle of a special session at that time. I'm not going to be going anywhere. I'll be stuck in Charleston, but these things are important to your county and are important to your commission.
Because, you know, it's important to us, we do this right, and follow through the process from beginning to end, and I think it's ensuring that Mr. President said, you know, we need to be as fair as we can with these actions, people, it's tough enough for people to get out and come to vote anyway, and it's difficult when you have to go by precincts to go to places. And I think that's one thing, when we look at this, we want to make sure that we try to identify those problems and correct them as best we can as we go through the process.
Exactly, and that was another thing that I talked to Mr. McCann about when we were in his office, and this is where we need input from the public, not creating hardships for the voters. Say if we, because you don't have enough voters, you know, let's put two of them together. Well, there's a lot of things you have to take into consideration, or if we have to split a precinct to try to get your magisterials equal in popular, need to look at the people, and we need for that's done. I'm not just going to take a chunk of a precinct and stick it somewhere else for numbers. We've got to look at what hardship am I going to create now, where it used to be across the street from them? Those are the issues we need, and they need to get written from you guys, to send in to them if you're aware of issues that are hardships for the voters as far as the voting and going to their polling places. A lot of people say you really aren't really creating a hardship on voters anymore because they can do early voting, and they can just go to the courthouse and do it early. Well, like you said, and someone said, not every, it's not really easy for everybody to do early voting either. So we need to make sure that in these precincts and for the polling places, of course, we also have to take, you know, the ADA into account too for the disabilities, and I know a lot of times those are problems with finding places that qualify for, you know, for polling places for your precincts. So much needs to be taken into consideration, but more than anything else, what we need to know about voting precincts is not to create a hardship on the voters. That's all they're for. They don't have a representative, they're not a political subdivision. They're a place to make it easy for the voters to go and vote.
Which would have the more weight, population density or the availability of polling places?
Oh, well, as far as population density, that's another issue that I think is actually going to be addressed during special session two, I'm not really sure. There was a bill that was in our session this year that actually was increasing the number of registered voters that were allowed in a precinct, where it used to be, I think it's currently like either 2,500 or 3,000, I'm not sure. It's one of those numbers, I'm sorry, I have it right, maybe. There's, we're able to get voters through a lot faster with electronics and everything like that, and we can actually do some consolidations of precincts and raise that number of voters. And now, something we need to understand, there's a difference between registered voters and population. In your precincts, we deal with registered voters. In your magisterials, we deal with population. Like I said, precincts don't have a representative, so we don't work, we don't deal with population. When it's a political subdivision where you have representatives, you're dealing with population, and you count everybody, every little child, no matter who it is, we're going to count the entire population. So population density is not as important as the number of registered voters when it comes to precincts. And like I say, it can be a lot, or it can actually be small. And another thing too, even then, when that bill goes through where they raise the number, you've got to remember this, to not create hardships for the voters, these are recommendations of the highs and the lows of the number of people we have in the precinct, they're not absolutes. Since this is not a political subdivision, we just don't want to create hardships on the voters. We may have a precinct way out in a very rural area that may only have 25 voters in it, but you know what? That's okay. It may not go by the code, but we're not going to create a hardship for these voters, and they would have to drive 50 miles to go vote if we didn't create a precinct and have a polling place for them. So numbers as far as precincts are just recommendations, they're not absolutes, we just do not create hardships for voters.
So maybe, maybe necessary to add there, vote in the polling places in order to alleviate hardships?
Yes, if you have, you know, if the pop, if there's, if a hardship's created because the people don't, aren't able, if you've got that many people that they're all not getting in to vote, you know, at the time the polls are closing, they're still standing in line outside of the door. If that's an issue, then possibly do need to put another, you know, split it and make two precincts out of it. There's always issues like that. You know, like I say, anything that you all have, I'm sure your commissioners would be glad to listen to your written or emails that you would like to send in with specific precincts noted to them, because I know they're more than willing to work with the county clerk and the voter's registration office to try to correct any of these problems.
Anything we can do on that? We talked earlier about trying to sit down and do what we have to do now, and at some juncture, look at voter registration and how we might be able to improve it, and completely realize that the number of people participating in voting is too low, and if there's some things while we're into this that we can do to improve that, then we're going to address that, and Ms. Von has agreed to assist us with that, as fast as we finish this task here.
Because, you know, one of the things we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I still have a problem on that, I still have a match on that on those 24, 25, 28, 29, they all totaled for 25, 24, and there's no total there for 27 in Sheridan District.
Yeah, I couldn't see anything either different, so I'm assuming that Ms. Von will go back and look at that and get us an upgrade or...
Did you say the precincts that are showing add?
They all add to 45 political...
There's one precinct.
Or one precinct missing for 27.
And do you all geographically know where that precinct is supposed to be?
Yes, we do.
27 is an A to L, 28 is M to Z of that area.
Which is represented by 28 on the map.
Okay, that's, see, I run into that in other counties too. It's something I would actually very much like, would recommend to the county, then redo your maps, where you have an alpha split that we name, give them the same number, but like an A to B. to B? Because then we don't have this issue with people saying, I had that precinct number. We have.
Are you saying that twenty-seven has been dissolved?
No, 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 twenty-seven exists.
Added in the others?
Twenty-seven still exists, this is what I'm saying, the problem is, the geographic area shown on there is twenty-eight is both geographically for everybody in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, but there's an alpha split. When you go to the polling place, A through something goes to one polling booth and the end of the alpha that goes to another polling booth. So that we don't have this confusion that's happening right now. What I would suggest for the county is for us to call this twenty-eight A, B. And those who are out for the alpha split, you'll be twenty-eight A or you'll be twenty-eight B. That way we're not saying, where's twenty-seven? Because if we look at another complete number, we're looking for a split to be on the map. But when we've got an alpha split, that's just my suggestion, you know, it's up to you guys how you would want to do it, but not to, you know, for someone who's saying they're in twenty-seven, they're going to look at the map and they say, where's twenty-seven?
And twenty-four is twenty-four A and twenty-four B on Christie's list here.
And twenty-five has an A and B, fourteen has an A and B, five has an A.
Well, just like that shows only seven, six isn't showing, but six is the, the split A through L, I think. Yeah, you know, and that's what I'm saying, let's not put numbers that aren't going to show. So, you know, if we've got eighty, if we've got alpha splits, let's give them the same precinct number, but let's put an extension on that split.
And it could be the same on thirty and thirty-one.
And this is the kind of stuff I need from you guys too.
Same thing for Duvall, nineteen. It doesn't show nineteen on Laurel Hill, but we got an A and B, or A through whatever we should split in.
Right, so the geographic area is included in there, but you're, like you say, you're looking for a nineteen, where's it at? Let's not be looking for numbers that aren't going to be on there. Let's put everybody in nineteen and twenty in twenty, but you're either going to be in twenty-eight or you're going to be in twenty-B, you know, depending on your alpha split.
I think when you put this together, you know, you'll have to have local people say as far as which direction people travel and things like that. I think Charles mentioned that geographically. Because you know, you don't want to have people over in, you know, whatever district having to come to Harts or whatever, you know, if, 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 say you wanted to combine, I'm not saying this would happen, but say you'd want to combine Duval and Harts and they really, Harts is, everybody travels either north or south on Route Ten and over at Duval District, they're on Route Three or they're in Mud River or whatever, and would have absolutely no reason to be over in that, in that district itself. Um, and the reason for that, I think, is that, you know, the, the people in these different districts, that because they work and they go to school in different areas and things like that, they have different wants and needs for their area that maybe one area wouldn't have.
Exactly, and that's what I refer, refer to as communities of interest. And this is where I need the input from you as commissioners as well as, as the citizens. We want to keep those communities of interest together, um, within the magisterials or whatever we for, or formulate, and even with precincts. Communities of interest aren't as much as communities that fall in place with precincts, but keep communities of interest together. Because as long as those are together, like you say, the interest and the people are in the same, are the same. So you want to keep those kind of people, communities of interest is very important.
As we get into this too, we have to keep in mind of the committee people who are various districts, that we have to make sure that we don't.
Counties where they, you know, cut down to three districts, so what do they do with committee people? I mean, how do they, do you ever had executive committee?
Uh, yeah, it depends. There are counties, um, that lead the same executive, you know, if they go from six to three, you had, you had twelve, we start each district. I mean, that, you can do that or you can get rid of four people, I mean, get rid of six people, but you know, it's, that's, that's up to the commission and the people, however you all decided you want to do it. It's being done both ways. I mean, Canal County has four magisterials, they have fifty-some executive districts. You know, so there's no absolute limit on what you can do or.
But I think, I think that's, you know, I, my question, point of the question being that I think these executive members, they live in the communities. And if you, you know, we have to cut, if we would have to cut back on them, I don't think it'd be fair because you'd wind up cutting back representation from people that are right there that would be able to be responding to their needs much quicker than would be someone.
And you're also putting more of a burden on as far, as far as the people working in the precincts, you're putting more of a burden on others, that's.
Yeah, I think that you have to protect the rights of voters and you have to protect these committees and things, community identity when, when we look at this, I think that's something that I'd certainly be looking at.
Joe, if, say we consolidated Duval and Harts, then we would leave, and this is more based on what Commissioner Vance said, this is just hypothetical. If we would leave the committee people in place, say we have a sub-district Harts, sub-district Duval, and we had committee people that ran from Harts, would they run just from the Harts sub-district or would they also be running in the Duval?
You would have, you, you would have your executive districts, I would be backing executive districts for you and they would run exclusively within that executive district boundary.
Yeah, that'd be a separate subject.
Exactly, that's a, a sep- a separate, separate area, but I, I'll do that, I'm doing that for you too.
Is that the law or is that something that we would decide? Because I did have someone in a different, a different county tell me that, for example, they had a situation where two committee people ran from, say, the Harts area and they both were the top vote-getters, so they were the two committee people representing the Duval and Harts area.
To be honest with you, I'd have to look at the code on that. I couldn't, I couldn't address it and give you a straight answer right now, I would have to look at that. But normally, as far as any executive districts I've ever drawn, the, the repu- the executives that, in those districts lived in those districts. Or within the precinct, you know, for their, and for the precincts that they governed over, were in their district.
That's what I would, would hope that's the way it is. That's the way I'd certainly want to see the outcome and protect that part of it because the committee people have two or three responsibilities. One of the main ones is getting people to, to work the polls and they know who's to depend on, who'd be there and what they do, and that's what I think it's important, we try to protect. But I appreciate if you could, you know, order the code.
I will, I, I will get the code for you.
Other comments? Yes?
Well, no, if this, if the commission can answer this or if Ms. Vaughn answered this, how does the, the voting district map and the county block maps, how do those get updated?
I'm sorry, would you ask again?
How do the county block maps and the voting district maps, how do those get updated?
By the federal government.
But how do?
Oh, the voting, the voting.
Voting district.
Your precincts. No, it's, the block maps are done by federal government. They're the ones that do the, the census blocks in and that's where they count the people. Now, your voting districts or your precincts, those are submitted. Well, the way it was this past time, and it changed, but it was totally different this past, um, census. What happened is two, about two years before two thousand, six, eight, about two thousand eight, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we sent letters to all the commissions from our, again, let me take this hat off, put my hat on, from our office at the legislature. We sent letters to all the commissions and the county clerks, asking them to send those maps and or meets and bounds of all the precincts within their county. Because we were going, unlike before, we didn't do the digitizing. I digitized them this time. I sat down and I digitized them and sent, sent them via GIS to the federal government to show them as they were, that they, that they currently are in those counties. Um, we had also asked at that time if there were any ridge lines within your county that you all would like to have used as a precinct boundary, but were unable to because of the new law in three dash, two dash five where we changed it, where you all started having to use census block boundaries for your precincts. Previously, you all could have went behind houses, but now you have to go on streets and roads, which didn't make a lot of people happy. Um, but sometimes ridge lines are important, used as a precinct boundary. So you don't have people having to, everybody on this side of the mountain goes to a polling place here, everybody on this side of the mountain goes to a polling place there. We asked counties, give us some, give me, give me some ridges in your county, because I was able to put ridges on the federal maps. And I've put a lot of ridges, not all of West Virginia ridges, or we had a big block map, but I was able to put a lot of ridges on the maps from the counties so that the federal government did put the, them on the map. And, and I've got those, uh, for a lot of counties. Boone County was one that I did a lot of ridges for and because they wanted to use those for precinct boundaries. Because we had people, so there was a road at the bottom of this mountain and we were having to put, we had to put the house line on that road. Because we couldn't put it at the top of the mountain because there, the house has to use census boundaries. And there was no census boundary at the top of that mountain, but guess what it is now? So what was happening, if we put the house line on that road, everybody on this side of the mountain had to drive about twenty-some miles around that mountain to the polling place for this bunch of people. But now that we can put the house line on the top of that ridge, guess what, everybody on that side of the mountain can be in this house district. And that was very advantageous.
I don't think I'm still clear. So if I look, if I pull up a map in the federal government for my, for the voting district, uh, a voting district map for Lincoln County and a county block map for Lincoln County, it's, it's all erroneous or it's no good?
No, you mean like if you go to census dot gov?
That's correct.
And you pull up, no, they're correct.
They're correct.
Well, I'm not saying they're correct. Here's a reason why they cannot be correct. Your census block boundaries are always correct because we don't have anything to do with that. The census makes the census block. And for those that don't understand, a census block is the, is a unit that's totally enclosed by a physical boundary. Um, so population can be counted in it. And it could be something like a city block, so they count everybody in that city block. Or it could be a huge area if we're out in a rural part of the country where nothing connects with anything, because it has to be connected, like roads connected to another road or connected to the creek. It has to get enclosed somehow, either by a municipal bound, municipal boundary or a creek or a road or something. Once it's enclosed, the census bureau's going to count, count the population there. The census bureau does all of those. Of course, when I put ridge lines in and stuff like that that I put in, that became another block boundary, so now they can count the population from the top of that ridge down, down the road, before they didn't, they counted everybody on both sides of the mountain. Um, those are done through the federal government and those will be correct. Now, when it comes to your polling places or your voting precincts, I cannot say what you're going to look up on, that census dot gov is going to be correct. One of two things. The county has not turned in anything, any changes that have been made to their precincts for years and years and years and years. We have one county that we have not gotten any changes in since nineteen thirty. Um, so, but if you go to that county, their precincts are not nowhere like they're showing on the federal map. Because unless someone from that county submits changes and makes sure those changes go through for their county, they're not going to change on that federal map, just like I was talking about the BASS. Somebody's got to let that federal government know changes took place. So that's what I'm saying. And if you go to census.gov, if you're looking at the block, it's a hundred percent right and that's the way it's, and that's the way it is.
The thoughts of using for Lincoln County, I don't know if you argue, I have letters from all the way back from nineteen and eighty-six certifying this, from McCoy to Brad Stowers to Terry to all of them, through, actually through the beginning of this year, reporting no changes and certified the eight magisterial districts. So that's why we need to go into these neighborhoods, we need to straighten this up. Do you realize that Jefferson and Union has been not represented in any respect since nineteen eighty-six? We don't, in those two districts, we don't have a drop of public wire, we don't have roads. I mean, there's some misjustices in this county which has to be corrected.
Other comments?
Mr. McCann, I'm just, I'm clear. Are these the numbers of present day in all these districts that are on this map?
That's the question I asked her, what, where did she get those numbers?
Look in your legend down there, it says census, two thousand ten population. Those are the population counts for those areas in the two thousand ten census. And that's what's on that map.
Because I know in our local media, it's, they've had some figures and I just see that there's a big disparity between what they were showing in Laurel Hill and what you showed.
Yeah, they were showing two thousand numbers, I believe.
Yeah, I started saying, I looked at a map in Mr. McCann's office earlier, but that was from the two thousand census. And that's why you, if the, if the local media was using the two thousand map, that's why.
Well, they showed both, if I'm not mistaken. I think they showed the two thousand and, they showed the two thousand and ten.
Yeah, and these came, exactly, these are from the federal maps and the numbers, the numbers.
So that'll probably be revised then, I guess.
Thing is, I didn't put those numbers in. The federal, those come out of the, out of, out, from the federal government.
Okay, but I just want to clarify that. I didn't know whether you would, you know, begin to experiment or this was the actual.
Yeah, that's the actual.
Uh, Ms. Vaughn, at the top of the map here, could you go over the deviation statistics?
Yeah, that's what, if you'll see, that's, that right there shows the deviation.
They have like.
From the ideal.
Okay, so Carroll District, wait, not Carroll District, I'm sorry. Um, Sheridan District has a twenty percent, twenty point eight, twenty point, twenty point three percent disparity. Duval has a twenty-four point nine seven percent disparity. Um, Harts has a minus nineteen point eight six percent disparity. And in the ideals, be somewhere around what percentage?
The ideal value is right up there. The ideal is exactly, if you would take your county's population and divide it by six, that's what the ideal is, the three thousand six hundred and twenty?
About that.
Yes, that is the ideal population for every one of your magisterials. If you look at the population, the next column is showing you, ignore that top number, that's the rest of West Virginia. They've got a big disparity, look at their percentage. Um, but anyhow, the population is telling, what the population of that magisterial is, the deviation is telling you how far off that magisterial is from the ideal, either in the positive or the negative direction. The present deviation is telling you how, what percent they are from the ideal, um, in negative or positive percentage. Overall deviation between your smallest, um, magisterial to your largest magisterial cannot, and then we're saying overall, so that's taking the, the biggest negative number and the biggest positive number and you add the two together, cannot go over ten. Has to be less than ten percent. Obviously, you all aren't.
When you start looking, if you looked at combined districts, that number thirty-six twenty, if you were going to combine two districts, that number would be seventy-two forty, right? As being the ideal?
Oh, yeah, you, exactly. If you were going, if you.
You said you wanted to make six of these districts three.
Yeah, then your ideal would actually be double, but, double.
Other comments, suggestions?
The actual control of the voting, is that composed by the state or by the federal? I'm saying that everybody that works in election are paid to work there. Whose, whose budget does that come out of?
Comes out of county.
A state or the federal?
County.
Comes out of county. And by what measure are they, is it needed out by population, by voters, or it's? District, this, district gets so much money? This district gets X amount?
It's, it's decided on individual precincts of having five voters, Democrat, five Republicans, and then we, we just pay them all the same. Now, if their job responsibility differs, like coming in and getting ballot boxes and things, then there'd be an extra dollars added to that, but everybody's on an equal basis.
By precinct?
By precinct. By, and by code is how many voters, how many people, workers you should have in each precinct. If that's wrong, somebody tell me.
Mr. Chris, if I could just, if I could just say something real fast. I think it's important, uh, from a, from a, just a public perception standpoint, I've watched, uh, I've watched Ms. Vaughn work, uh, like a bear the last six months.
like a bear the last six months with, with all of us at the legislature. And it's been quite an undertaking, it's, it's been quite a task. Uh, there's a, there's, seems to be a waiting list a mile long to get in to see her. Um, and I, but I, I think it's important for the public and everyone to know that my belief, that Ms. Vaughn assisting the commission, that this process will be done with the utmost professionalism and integrity. Uh, and I think it's important for everybody to, I've seen, I've seen her work, like I said, with the legislature and, and, and she, 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 she works with the utmost integrity and she's, and she's, I mean, she works hard and I think that's important for everyone to know, because obviously people, people need to have, people need to have that perception in themselves that, that this is, this is working for them. And, and I, I just want to point that out, because I've, I've seen her work and I, and I believe it will be a quality product, so.
And maybe I should at this time introduce, we got two House of W representatives with today. One's a fifteen and the one's a nineteen, Josh Stowers disposed and Carol Miller here. So, we're certainly glad you guys took time to show up. Anything else, any other comments? And.
I'd just like to say something since I'm from the Harts area and I hear this complaint all the time from the people that live in Leek. And Leek, Big Ugly area, was always considered the Harts district and they're in, they're the only precinct that was in the original Harts district that has been changed over to Laurel Hill. And people don't like it up there, so.
You know, which side of the river you live on, right, the creek you live on?
No, the people from the Big Ugly district don't understand.
I mean, some of them still have their precincts, some of them have to come to Pearl'sburg.
Right, but they don't understand why they're a part of Laurel Hill instead of part of Harts. Where, when their kids grew up in the Harts district, their kids went to the Harts schools. And so that's the only little precinct in our area that's considered Laurel Hill. So that, that's a common thing we hear up there is, we don't even know who we belong to, you know?
We will look at that based on your comment, so.
And then also, I've worked at, you know, various precincts around, one of them's at the Duval High School and that's a confusing area too, because you've got people from Yawkey, you've got people from Semurco, and then you've got people from Duval all trying to vote there. But, and then you have some people from Garrett's Bean coming in there to vote, and then there's Garrett's Bean precinct. So that area right there is, is always confusing. Um, almost every voter that came in there had a difficult time.
Okay, well, there's, I know, I'm sorry.
Well, and then there's two other points about ADA compliance. I personally worked at Midway School and almost fell and broke my leg because there was a step down to get to the voting door, to go in the building. And my suggestion, and I haven't, I only, I may have mentioned this to Christie, was maybe putting the voting precinct in the gymnasium where people with walkers and wheelchairs could get to. Because we personally had to go out and assist people on canes to get down over that one step. And so, I mean, I didn't even see it at early five-thirty in the morning, the lighting was so poor and crypt and so it is a hazard there. And then there's another precinct, I think, up on Four Mile, Christie, that one that's in a house. Is, is his ADA compliant, does it have steps, ramp, whatever? Because we, you're supposed to by law have to have a wheelchair ramp.
Yeah, it should be ADA compliant. And of course, again, back to earlier discussion, like, there's been people who want to move that precinct. We have discussed that, but again, it takes them so far away from their community, but there could be probably a better place to vote than maybe where it's at, but, but again, trying to keep it as close as you can to the voters is their concern, but, but we will make note of that.
Yeah, and just so the public's aware, I traveled with Christie for the county clerk's office and we went to every single precinct to see if those precincts were ADA, met the requirements. And we took pictures, there's some federal and state money available, so we're going to go after monies to fix those precincts later on. We did that three months ago.
Well, I mean, that one at Midway, if they changed, if you just moved it from the, from a classroom, that's another issue. If you have the voting precincts in classrooms, the classrooms are so jam-packed full of teacher supplies. I mean, things get knocked off the walls, the desks have to be moved. Um, so we maybe need to look at putting them in a, like a more open area, like a gymnasium.
That's not a county decision. Uh, we let the people who run the precincts set up the voting areas, they choose the place.
And the principal.
At the principal's in the school.
We don't make decisions.
Well, I mean, but couldn't Mr. Wittens office make a suggestion, still haven't been a classroom, haven't been a gymnasium, so do they have better access?
Like I said, it's, sometimes it's school people who decide they don't want you having access to certain places, but I'm sure he could recommend.
I don't care where we put ours, we have one in the cafeteria, I don't care. Well, that's what I'm saying, a cafeteria or gym would be better than a classroom. I mean, it's just so crowded in those classrooms with the school supplies, the desks, the computers, that's what I'm saying. It's hard, it's harder for people to maneuver and get the machine set up with plug-ins, that's the other issue. And elderly people have to maneuver through that classroom to be able to change, so.
All right, what else do we need? Been a great meeting, uh, we will ask, motion to adjourn this meeting at seven o'clock and we will, until August the third, at six o'clock in this room. We'll come back and, you got a motion for a second?
Second.
Stand adjourned, and any comments you have, please put them in writing that you want to add to or re- affirm the ones you've made, send my attention and may see you again on the third. Thank you all.